Good evening, everyone. It is now six thirty-two P M. Uh, this is your regular meeting, uh, planning zoning commission, um, November the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, we do have a quorum here tonight. Uh, you have myself, Derek Parks Chair. Uh, you have Michael Vice Chair. And you have Karen to my right, uh, member. And also too, we have Brian Bell here as an alternate member here tonight. And with the city staff, we have been Director of Development Services and Roderick Planning Zoning Manager. Um, for the consent agenda items, you have two on your sheet there, but number two, uh, will be, uh, tabled, uh, for tonight. So, um, commissioners, um, looking at the, what we have tonight is number one, which is approving the minutes of the meeting from October the twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. Have any questions or concerns regarding that agenda item?
No question.
No.
All in favor?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, uh, consent agenda item has been approved. Uh, moving along to, uh, new business, which is number three here on your handout is a conducted public hearing and consider zoning change from plan development one oh seven to revise five to plan development, uh, one oh seven revise, revised six, uh, for the submitted approval of the development plan. Requested located at the southwest corner of Harmony Way and North Interstate thirty-five, uh, requested by Michael Westfall. Um, that one tonight will be, uh, tabled, um, and we will listen to that or hear that.
Yeah, the, the applicant requested it to be tabled, so if you guys could make a motion and, and vote to table.
Yes, we want to table it indefinitely.
Indefinitely?
Yes.
Okay, and can have a motion for, uh, number three, uh, requested, uh, being tabled by the applicant indefinitely.
I make motion.
To be clear, sorry, we want to close the public hearing and table the item indefinitely, so.
So we need to open a hearing?
Open the public.
Yeah, so it would have been, you would have to open it, so we want to close the public hearing and table the item indefinitely.
Okay, um, for, uh, a gen item number three, um, I requested we open up the public hearing? Or, I'm sorry, request that we close the public hearing. For a gen item three.
I mean, that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, uh, the public, uh, has been closed, um, like we were saying, this item number three, uh, will be table indefinitely, uh, requested by the applicant.
We've got it now.
Vote on that.
Yeah, motion to, motion to table indefinitely and then vote on that.
And have a motion for agenda item three, please.
I move that we table agenda item three at the request of the submitter and that it be tabled indefinitely.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, uh, agenda item three will be table for tonight, uh, moving along to number four, which is a public hearing. Uh, considering a zoning, zoning change request from P D one-six-four, revised one to P D uh, one-six-four revised, revised two for the development of a data center complex and associated infrastructure on approximately two hundred and twelve point eight zero one eight acres of land. Um, identify P I N number three-one-two-nine-zero-five, Ellis County appraisal district, city of Red Oak, Ellis County, Texas. Case number Z as in zebra, C as in cat, two-five dash two-six requested by Michael, um, is it landware?
Yeah.
Landware. Staff, please.
All right. Sorry. All right, thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Commission. Of course, um, so this one is actually going to be the development plan phase two for this development plan for this project. Um, the applicant is just simply coming in to submit their development plan for this project, their second phase of this development plan. They're sticking to what they initially submitted for the zoning for this project, just, um, doing the additional buildings for this one. So four additional data center buildings for this particular project right off of, um, Stainbeck and Bachelor Road. Um, so they're doing the buildings that are exterior here. And then the additional infrastructure that goes with those, they will also be completing the roadway extension for Bachelor Road and making sure that they maintain all of those road and including the landscaping and everything that goes with this particular, um, site as well, so, um, that's really what they're doing here, nothing is changing from this one, just completing all of the, um, the development that they already applied for, all the zoning and everything with this one is going to remain the same. The landscaping, the screening is going to remain the same, so they'll have those, um, the screening, uh, fences and the berm and all of that, that'll be along Bachelor Road here. Um, as well as, like I said, they'll be developing that roadway that's along that west side of the property. So, um, that's the majority of this one that we're going to have.
Yeah, so this is just, you know, so our process is we come in, we do the zoning for the use in a basic concept plan, and then they've came back and did their, uh, detailed development plan for the first phase, which was those first four buildings and now their, uh, second phase is, is what this is for.
So, this is just more in detailed pages for this one, just kind of breaking down the overall site plan for this. Go through those just a little bit, if you guys have any additional questions as we kind of look through these a little bit. This just goes into the landscaping, that's similar, it's the layout, just showing all the landscaping that's involved with this particular, um, site. So, you see the all of screening trees, um, that's in the right of way, the berm and then the shrubs that are also inside of here as well. That is it, I'll stand for any additional questions if you guys have them.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, this is a public hearing, uh, and those who are in favor of this item, you can go first, uh, please state your name and your address, uh, when you come to the, uh, podium. And those who may be against this item or have questions, you can go second.
I'd like to speak on it.
As of now, you're.
It touches my property and I believe I'd like to speak directly to you, I believe that there was.
What's your name, ma'am?
I'm sorry, my name is Terry Cohen, I live at fifteen ninety-eight Stainback, it directly touches my property. I'd like to speak directly to you, um, I believe you made a comment at one of the planning and zoning meetings that if we cared, we'd showed up. Our entire neighborhood showed up and said that we did not want this. We were actually promised when we were annexed into the city in two thousand and one, that our neighborhood would remain a ranchette. And we would receive city water, city sewer, and I've been out there long enough to remember that, you've gone back on that. We told you that we did not want this, and now this is coming out and it's going to touch our property. I don't want it, I'm showing up here, I know that you've already approved it, we looked on the appraisal city, the district, you've already got the numbers changed. It's not going to change anything, but I'm here to let you know, we do care, we did show up, it didn't matter, we're all aware that it's about money. You don't care about the people that live out there, you don't care about what we want, you don't care that our area is completely agricultural, you don't care that we moved out there for a certain way of life. And I, we don't appreciate the fact that you don't care about us as citizens, you, we don't. So the next time that you make a statement about the fact that we don't care, our entire neighborhood showed up to state that we do care, this isn't what we wanted. And we are citizens, we do have a certain way of life that we would have liked to have keep, kept out there, we didn't want a data center. We were promised that our area would remain ranchette when we annexed into the city, otherwise, none of us would have ever agreed to that. So the next time you make statements, maybe you should really listen to your citizens.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else that want to speak on this agenda item? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, uh, the public hearing has been closed. Miss listeners, any, any questions or concerns?
Yep.
For staff regarding this agenda item?
I just had one, uh, Mr. Palmer, could you hit just the highlights on what the changes are from, um, number one to number two, plan development, R one to, or two? Put some of the highlights on it, what, what were the major changes in it?
Um, I think the major, one of the, let's get to our site plan, let me go up here. I think one of the major, uh, changes would be, um, they have a, they're proposing this septic, uh, field that's here.
Right.
That's right there along Bachelor, um, you won't necessarily see this septic field, um, that's one of the changes though, because the elevation of the site. It kind of slopes down in towards the site, so with the screening that's already that's going to be in place, you won't see that, um, from the roadway. You'll drive right past it and you won't see it because of the screening that's going to be in place. One of the other things that's going to be, um, with this one is actually the applicant has proposed some of their, I think, cooling, um, devices for this, the data centers that will be on top of the buildings. Um, however, they do have screening that they will be installing, um, for those, that'll be, uh, some of the other items that's there. And I believe really that's the, those are the biggest items that are, I'm sorry, and they proposed one additional entrance, um. It's the, yeah, yes.
Yeah, the only, the only change here is that we're, we're just solidifying the placement of the buildings and the substations and with a detailed site plan.
So, I want to make sure, we're not changing anything to do with the berms or the.
No.
Landscape.
No, those aren't changing, those are staying the same. So those are very minor, minor changes.
Is this, I remember this from before, I don't recall, is this the one where we went back and forth with the neighbors about the height? And we had actually put a different or special height restriction on it? Is it, I don't, I don't remember if it was this one or a different one?
Uh, we didn't, it's got the same requirements that all the other ones have, which I believe is seventy foot, which is, which is our base industrial zoning.
I just remember being a topic of, I think we, they just said that, that they're not going to get close to that, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Karen, anything from you?
No.
Roger, Michael mentioned, am I voting tonight?
Yes.
Okay, he had mentioned it, I have been kind of quiet, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, you're definitely voting.
Okay, I'll answer it. See, that's what, I've never happened in the past, always had three.
Yeah, you, you guys are a quorum, so.
Yeah.
You're fine, you're fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, we're fine.
Got you.
I know, I'm dying, I've never voted over a year, I've never gotten to vote.
Sorry, Brian.
It's okay, we'll get there. I, it's cause I let Suzie take my spot, we came in same time.
All right, uh, if anything, nothing further, uh, can I have a motion, please, for agenda item four?
I move we approve agenda item four as presented.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes, eyes have it, agenda item four has been approved, uh, moving along to number five on your handout, which is also a, uh, public hearing, uh, is considered a zoning change from A G to P D. Plan development one-eight-six, uh, to modify development standards and allow commercial and multifamily uses to be developed on approximately twenty-seven point five eight three seven acres. Uh, P I N number one-eight-eight-five-seven-three, uh, city of Red Oak, Ellis County, case number Z as in zebra, C as in cat, two-five dash two-two requested by Drew Denowski. Staff, please.
All right, yes, thank you again, Chairman and Commission, yes, this is a request for, um, to allow commercial and multifamily uses on this particular tract of land.
You're going to hit the map?
Yeah, I'll go for the overall, I'll show you the overall map, so this one is located right off of Old Villa and uh, what's this, Grand Meadow Boulevard? So, here, so we have, what's it, west of, west of third, west along Old Villa Road of thirty-five and just east of Yule Road, I'm sorry, went too far. Yes, so Yule's right there, and this one is kind of right here, um, tucked in, so kind of one of the gateways into the city coming um, east into the city, so, is where this one's located. Um, so this one is, uh, they're requesting the commercial uses and multifamily uses that back up right into this neighborhood. Um, for this one, the applicant is requesting uses for the C one, in the C one district that are in the commercial, um, districts. They remove some of those more intense C one uses, um, so like your auto repair and your auto, um, auto rental locations, they like remove some of those in their P D development, um, for that one, as well as with the, um, with their multifamily, they do have, they've increased the multifamily, they're looking to do approximately three hundred and fifty multifamily inside of this one. Um, and they have, let's go to some of their, their exhibits. Um, they've included a area that they're calling mixed use, that's going to be adjacent to the other um, residential area that's to the northwest of this site. And kind of look at kind of some of the layout that they're proposing, of course, the multifamily is going to be here. They have the commercial that's going to be right along Old Villa, as well as that proposed either commercial or mixed use area that's going to be located here. You guys will see this if it comes, when it comes back in for actual development plan. Um, kind of here what the applicant is indicating here, is the proposal for what they are proposing to screen, how they're proposing to screen it is, um, they're proposing to do just, um, living screening along the, uh, adjacent to the residential areas that are to the north and the northwest, instead of the typical requirement of a masonry wall, screening wall. So along here and along here, so along the multifamily and the commercial buildings, they're looking to do just a living screen, um, also along this area, um, you can see kind of the layout again, more in a colorful type of fashion. And this is kind of some of their, their, um, their aerial exhibits, what they're proposing and how that is looking to, to, um, they're looking to develop here. So this one is located in the I thirty-five corridor plan, in which we do have those regulations that are there, which are required the increased landscaping and increased, um, architectural standards that are there, um, so kind of you'll see some of their, what they're proposing as far as their elevation examples and things of that nature for their multifamily, um, structures that they're proposing as well as, we'll get to their, um, commercial proposal as well. So their commercial elevations as well that they're proposing. Um, that's what we have for this one, I'll stand for any additional questions you guys may have.
But the applicant is here with a presentation.
The applicant is here, the applicant is here for, with their presentation, but if you have any questions for me right now, I do, I'm more than willing to answer them.
Okay, thank you, uh, Roger, I don't have anything at this moment, but yes, thank you so much. Yeah, presentation.
If you want to open the public hearing, they're going to give their presentation here.
Um, this is a, uh, public hearing, and those who are in favor of this item, they can go first, please state your name and your address, and those who maybe have questions or concerns or against this item, you can go second, so now, sir, you have the floor.
How you doing? Um, I'm the applicant, uh, Victory Real Estate Group, uh, Bobby in Mendoza. Uh, we are located at six hundred South Sherman, Richardson, Texas. Um, how, how y'all doing today, so? So what we're doing is we're bringing forth a, uh, plan, uh, plan and, um, excuse me, a planning, a P D plan development uh, for the overall twenty-four acre development located Old Villa and Grand Meadow. Um, the purpose of, of the overall plan is to, to put together a commercial district along the front edge, which will have retail, restaurant, um, and various commercial uses, um, having a multifamily district there in the rear that'll buffer between the commercial and the single family. And then what we're designating as a mixed use area to the west of the creek. Um, that mixed use area would be a variety of, of uses, could be commercial, office and, and maybe some, um, kind of smaller townhouse units in, in the future, we just don't know what that two acres will, will be, um, as we're, as we're progressing through the development. Okay, so this site is, if you recall, was recently, um, annexed into, uh, the city of Red Oak in November of twenty twenty-five, in August of twenty-five. Um, so you could see the, uh, the area highlighted here, just south of the Camden Home, uh, development there. Um, as you could see, the house is, is it, it's an old, um, kind of ranch style house, it's been there for a long time in a family trust. Um, and, uh, we've been working with this seller, I would say, for about six months now to, uh, put this, put this together. Um, really, wha- what we're showing you here is, is really just a concept elevation of what we'll be doing from, uh, from a commercial standpoint. Uh, Victory Real Estate Group, I don't know if, if you've seen any of our product or, or heard of who we are, but we're, we're a, uh, mixed use multi-tenant developer. We have probably build ten to fifteen of these multi-tenant retail strips a year all around D F W. Um, we, we will buy anywhere from one acre to twenty-six acres, uh, put together the development um, and, and then start to, uh, build all of our retail, uh, products typically on, on a larger project like this. When we got twenty, when we got the, the larger, uh, twenty-four acres, most likely we'll start with one or two of the retail buildings that you see there um, on lot two and lot six, um, and really then start to build up what our, what our activity will be like from, from a retail perspective. Um, for us, uh, what's important is that this site is a little bit deeper. Um, so having that buffer with the single family in the back and bringing the, the, the multifamily is, is really how we, how we envisioned, uh, the property um, on that, and then leaving the, um, the higher uses, the restaurants and the retailers, having that, having that component of the single families and then the multifamily can help drive that traffic to bring people to the west side of thirty-five here, um, as, as, as you've seen, Red Oak, everything from a, from a retail perspective, other than the new theater and, and the sit-down restaurants is to the east of thirty-five there, so really would be anchoring this side and, and being one of the first developments to bring that re- that retail and the restaurant on the west side of thirty-five would be, is, is really what we're trying to, to accomplish, in order to do that, we need the residents and, and the people to help um, drive that daily traffic, that daily need of what retailers are going to be looking for on an everyday basis. So then you could see, I highlighted the, the site plan here, um, with the commercial district up front. Though you could see the, the, the multifamily district there in the rear and then the mixed use district that we're, we're highlighting here. Um, we are along the, um, creek here, this is a creek that, that is existing. Uh, we will have a, uh, connectivity of a pedestrian trail that will connect to the existing trail that's on the, I guess, let's call it the planned northwest side of that property. We'll bring that trail, you could see the sidewalk, um, roughly coming in this area all along the creek, it'll come down and connect to Old Villa Road here, so we will have that, uh, connectivity. Um, we, as, as mentioned, we worked with the city and, uh, it's, since it's within the I thirty-five corridor and the, the vision for the future land use, we built in, um, we built in regulations for all the landscaping, um, as well as I believe, and I'll let the multifamily speak on this, as, as well as some of the finishes that are envisioned to be within that, um, that, uh, that corridor there. So we're, we're really trying to, to, to meet the intent of the thirty-five corridor, really en- enhance the green, um, on, on the overall site as, as, uh, the project gets developed. Okay, a- as you could see on lot one and two, what we envision here is having, uh, patios for restaurants that would overlook this green area, um, and, and have that connectivity. The multifamily will have, uh, multiple pedestrian bridges, uh, gates and access points that would be able to come from the multifamily into, into the residential, I mean, into the commercial for lot six, um, lot two, lot five here, and then there's going to be a connectivity that'll bring them to the trail across this, uh, this access bridge that we'll be building on the backside of the property here. Okay, so this is some elevations of what the retail will look like, um, you know, this is pretty high level, we'll get into a little bit further detail once we, once we get into the, um, until the, the development plan and submit our elevations at that point in time, um, which will happen, uh, post, uh, post P D. And, um, but as you could see, this is pretty standard of, of what we build, we like to have a lot of flexibility on the storefront glass that allows us to have larger tenants and smaller tenants and the ability to, to be flexible and when we're leasing these spaces. The first two buildings that you see on lot two and lot six are, are larger buildings, so those are twenty thousand square foot plus buildings. So we will be with, with, with building large buildings like that, we will need that flexibility and which is why we, we show a lot of storefront um, along, along the front there, and, and we're not really identifying the exact door locations because at this point in time, we're, we're still at a very high, high level concept basis and, and until we know we, we have the, the zoning secured, we won't, we can't really go, um, go get tenants and, and really start truly leasing the space. Okay, so, as, as I mentioned. Okay, so as, as I mentioned, this, we followed the uh, the I thirty-five corridor vision plan here. And then I will bring up our uh, multifamily partner who will talk a little bit more about their product and, and show you some examples of, of some of their um. Their uh, communities.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, members of Planning and Zoning. My name is Brett Foster. I reside at one three eight nine zero Lafferty Street. And I represent the developer for the Wolf Company. So a little background on who the Wolf Company is, uh, it's a third generation family-owned business founded in nineteen forty-nine. Headquartered in Scottsdale, Arizona with approximately four hundred employees. Um, part of the Texas local team here and we actually have a member from the city of Red Oak as well, working on the team that we're proud to work with. Um, the Wolf Company specializes in delivering high-quality multifamily properties across the United States. And as evident, we've been, we've received approximately ninety-four awards for our development since two thousand and fourteen alone. Um, today we own approximately twelve thousand units across the United States with four thousand in various stages of development. Fifteen hundred of those are in DFW, which were developed or acquired. Um, our team focuses on high-quality design and the overall resident experience. And while we also want to make sure we're a good neighbor for our adjacent users. Uh, with the Wolf Company, we are one of the few US developers with fully discretionary capital. And what that means is we're able to work our developments a little more flexible and be a long-term holder of the subject property. So you may be wondering too, what sort of renters coming into this area? And we have a great product right next to us with the Ovila Legacy Square that we can kind of replicate off of. Uh, so for our rents, we're targeting twenty-one hundred dollars uh, on average. And with a Wolf Company policy, prospective renters have to earn three times the monthly rental rate. To be able just to qualify for our apartment, so that would put it at roughly seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, just to be able to qualify for an average apartment here. And looking into our Wolf portfolio of DFW assets, that average income is seventy-eight thousand. And one thing that I want to ha- highlight is our renters are move-up renters. These are not going to be your first-time renter that's going to be causing riffraff and uh, trash in the place. These are going to be. Uh, higher quality tenants, average age of thirty-two years of age. Um, and one of the reasons why I really like this site is as Red Oak continues to grow at a rate of. North of five percent all the way through twenty twenty-nine, the rental ship rate, the rentership rate in Red Oak is just eighteen percent. Uh, across DFW, that average is closer to forty percent. And I think as you guys continue to grow smartly, uh, you should look to evaluate more rental housing. So community safety, Wolf Company is very large on as well. Uh, all, again, all of our residents are screened, uh, credit checks and then criminal background checks. Any resident that, or any prospective resident that has a felony record would be denied uh, within the last six to eight years. Um, additionally, our property will have security lighting, surveillance cameras with twenty-four hour monitoring. And we will offer a police discount program with nightly security patrols. Uh, the community will be gated and fobbed. As Bobby mentioned, we will have those pedestrian gates into the commercial and retail. Um, and then we will also implement thoughtful design through crime prevention through environmental design. Um, as we try to target these rental rates of twenty-one hundred bucks a month. It's important that we have luxury amenities for our tenants, so we will be offering an expansive clubhouse. Fitness center, resort-style pool, dog park, barbecues with curated seating areas. And an event lawn program for a mix of uses such as cornhole, bocce ball, croquet and food truck events. So as mentioned by Roderick, the current conditions on our northern property line. Have a existing masonry wall with a six-foot uh, privacy fence on top of that masonry wall. And our current, and the current ordinance calls for a six-foot tall masonry wall to be construction, constructed on that line. So we would propose that we implement a living screen wall with tightly planted uh, evergreens. That may one day grow above those structures and provide additional screening from the multifamily into that single family. And then again, looking at the I thirty-five corridor vision plan. We try to work uh, hand in hand with uh, city staff to try to make our, our elevations visually appealing from the street. And the buildings that are facing Ovila and Grand Meadow Boulevard will have a hundred percent masonry. Uh, additionally, the details on these uh, elevations will be very interesting and appealing with the cornices on the rooftops. Uh, brandings or bandings on the floor levels and various uh, colors of the masonry. Additionally, the project will have a grand entry boulevard with a monument sign to give you that sense of arrival. The property will also have engaging landscape such as the manaring sidewalk that already exists in place today at Grand Meadow. And we look to further enhance it. So here's just again, some sample exterior elevations that we've came up with on this site. You can kind of see all the visual elements that we took into it, such as the brick tower elements with the cornices. And then that monument sign to match it. And then as part of our overall development, we are trying to keep this a cohesive development, maybe mimic some of the colors on the deals and make sure it looks like a. One overall cohesive development. And then here's just some sample elevate, or some sample amenities that we've developed in the past. Such as like a barbecue grilling area, outdoor seating area with fire pits, cornhole, et cetera. And then here's just some interior inspiration shots, so this would actually be some design inspiration that we would have on our common areas. Now, we might put a different twist into each market, but this is the level of finish out that you can expect in our product. And then as for the interior living units, they're going to be very high quality as well. We'll be offering granite and quartz countertops in all units, stainless steel appliances, vinyl plank flooring. Um, bird down cabinets and more. And then here's just a quick summary of some other projects that we developed in the past. So we have filament and garland. Aya in the Phoenix market. And then Pace in the Phoenix market as well. So in summary, we're seeking approval tonight for a mixed-use plan development. Which will consist of commercial, restaurant, retail, multifamily uses. We'll be targeting the highest rents in the market with the best in-class design and amenities. And the multifamily fits that uh, I thirty-five corridor vision plan by offering a buffer from the more intense uses of the commercial and the retail. We will offer enhanced streetscape with perimeter landscaping. The community will be gated and secured, and we think it's a solution to providing more conveniences to the west side of I thirty-five. I will now kind of open the floor up for any questions.
Uh, I just have a one question that popped up. What is the um, vacancy? Uh, right here, Red Oak Forest Apartments.
Yeah, the vacancy rate right now is right around six to five percent, give or take.
That's, that's all I have asked for right now.
Perfect.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak on this?
Couple of letters. Just to uh, from the same household, but.
Uh, we did receive uh, some letters here tonight. Um, one letter is from Tammy uh, Lemon. At one eight seven uh, Bowling Green Avenue, uh, she was against this uh, item tonight. The person stated, I don't mind commercial. I don't mind commercial coming, but I am not a fan of apartment. Com- commercial, I don't, I don't mind commercial coming, but I am not a fan of apartments coming. So that's one letter from that individual.
It just says against, but no comment.
Uh, another individual from the same household, uh, Timothy Lemon. Also, I one eight seven Bowling Green Avenue, um, individual just checked against. And uh, no comments on that one. So we just received two letters uh, in regards to this item against this agenda item. And can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Eyes have it. Uh, the public hearing has been closed. Uh, commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant or staff here tonight?
I, I know we're just looking at zoning right now, but just a question for Brett. What, how many units are you looking at putting?
We're looking at three hundred fifty units.
And you talked about the living wall or living barrier. Uh, but in your, in the PD, it still says the six-foot.
Center on center from the, yep, so each uh, evergreen will be planted within six feet of the, of each other.
And on number two A, and there says a minimum six-foot tall wood privacy fence shall be provided along the boundary between the multifamily and single family. Did y'all intentionally leave that in there?
I think the intent for that was to, okay.
It's already there.
So that's the um, that's the, that is the residential fences, so. Um, in which that would have to be modified, so because that is the residential side of things, so they make that retaining wall. And the fences will be on the residential side, so they wouldn't be able to require the residential. Um, side to maintain their properties.
So they're, they're essentially proposing to plant shrubs.
Yes.
And, and be screened by the existing.
Residential fence and retain of law.
I gue- I guess I'm just confused why we would be stating that in here if. This property is not responsible for the fence whatsoever. Why is it even in here?
That will be a question the applicant will need to answer, but.
I think we were just trying to clarify that we'd be using the existing fence. We can remove that language out.
That's between your city staff.
Yeah, no, I, I, I do not disagree with that. Um, that was their proposal.
Okay.
Um, so we wanted to, I wanted to make sure that you were clear with that, so that, and what Ben was mentioning. So their proposal is to screen that with those living shrubs is their proposal.
Correct.
Um, so.
Thank you.
For clarification.
What assurances do we have that both projects will be done at the same time?
We, we don't, there's no.
We don't. Yeah, they would have to come back with the development plans for those, um, those projects.
Yeah, so we're, this is concept plan only.
Okay.
Yeah, so everything that you see is.
With their final development plans uh, for each development. And I'm guessing the multi always goes first because that's easy to fill up.
Yeah.
Go, go here, sir.
Assuming everything happens, we're building lot two uh, for retail right away, so um. Our, our, what we do is, is, is retail, um, along the frontage. That's what we do every day. We're not buying this to land bank that at all. Lot two will come out of the ground immediately. Right after zoning, you'll see a uh, a development plan coming. For, for that lot specifically. Pending tenant interest, lot six will then start. And it, and it could change. We, we could start with lot six versus lot two, but one of those two buildings will start right off the bat. And Victory is willing to commit to that.
Uh, right behind, I'm just kind of looking at the plans. Right behind lot two, is that an exit gate for the, for the housing? Or is that?
It's a, it's emergency only.
Okay, so but, so all these units are exiting out that one entrance and exit every morning?
Yes.
Over here, right here, up top on screen.
Yeah, so that's emergency. I was looking at the emergency exit.
Right, so you have one here, there's one, yeah, there's emergency here.
Okay, but that's not going to be for daily use.
Right.
So everybody's pouring out from here onto a small section of that, that road there before. Cause if they go left, there's nowhere to get out over there, unless they're heading south on the service road, which is not as likely.
Yeah, it's a turn here or.
Is there a light uh, plan for that interstate?
Barely road there right now.
Not right now. It has to be developed all the way out.
Yeah.
Again, all of this is conceptual.
Yeah, well, I knew that. I just wanted to give an idea of something that when they come back, I'm going to be concerned about. I mean. So if they can look at it and potentially find another way or something.
Right, no, I was mentioning that as far as the language that's within the PD is what realistically they are proposing. Um, this layout design is conceptual. A lot of it will come back in this fashion. The language inside of the PD though, is what we're looking for as far as what will be approved, um, for what they would need to follow.
Gotcha.
So. Staff request that we pay close attention to these pro, pro development standards. Are there particular ones we should be paying closer attention to? Cause there's a lot in there.
Uh, we just wanted to make sure it's a high-quality product, so and that always is basically just make it brick.
Yeah, right, right, that, um, the screening, the landscaping. Well, this one, it, this one is a PD, so this one will be setting its own regulations. Those PD regulations will be what they will be following. So we wouldn't have that additional.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, it was in there, so.
Oh, okay. Commissioners, any, any more questions or concerns?
Did y'all have any concerns, staff, with the uh, permitted uses that are?
Uh, no, we, we went through and struck a whole bunch of them and moved some over to S U Ps, you know, we're trying to avoid. Cart launch C one, C two uses, so we went through and, you know, like Roger said. Trying to get rid of a lot of the, you know, auto loop shops, car washes and. Just focus on retail, restaurant.
Okay. Anyone else?
I, I did in the uses, I feel like, and I may be wrong, is this the property? I swear there's a bit of sign over there for a while. It says daycare coming soon.
Uh, it's next door.
Okay. Cause I didn't see it in there, but I don't know, you know, I was like, okay.
Yeah, that, I think that side is just to the west of that one.
No, well, and that's, yeah. I wasn't sure how close it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, if you put us, put it in a multi-tenant building, not as big of a deal, but you wouldn't want to take up a whole piece of property with just a daycare.
Yeah.
Especially since I think we got one like right down the street, right, that little red schoolhouse.
There's a couple, yeah.
That's, that's on like a five acre lot or something.
Any more questions up? Okay. All right, uh, can I have a uh, motion for agenda item five, please?
I have moved that we approve agenda item five as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, eyes have it. Um, agenda item five has been approved. Moving along to agenda item six. Um, yeah, what was it?
Uh, this is the, yeah, they, they've uh, submitted a withdrawal letter for their application, so. Actually, just want to read it and then.
Yeah.
We'll say the applicant submitted a withdrawal letter and we, that's it.
Okay.
We don't know public hearing or anything.
Agenda item six, uh, zoning change from C one to PD one eight eight. Uh, abstract number one zero one four, address that's two thirty East Ovila Road. Case number Z as in zebra, C as in cat, two five dash two seven, requested by uh, Danny Humphries. Uh, we received a letter, uh, withdrawal letter from uh, that applicant for agenda item six.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir. So, yeah, we're just, this one we received, there was the withdrawal letter, so. Just looking to withdraw this one and just close this one out.
Okay. All right, and the next one is, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
It will be adjourned.
Second.
All in favor? Eyes have it. Planning and zoning meeting tonight has been concluded. Thank you everyone for your attendance.